Sorry.
I'll turn them off. Yeah, they're ready.
Alright, good morning everyone. Alright, good morning everyone. I'd like to remind everyone, please try to use the microphones as best as you can so that for quality assurance purposes. I'd like to call this budget work session to work. And I want to welcome everyone here. And we're going to have a few reserved things. And then around lunchtime, we're going to enter into motion to go into closed session. Uh, Dr. Baldwin, are you ready to start?
I would be good just to preface by taking a look at the agenda today. As Chairman I heart said, we're going to be offering a work session followed by a closed session with Campbell. We'll get a little bit more detailed with that shortly. I'm going to be giving you information via our PowerPoint we put together regarding, and I want to emphasize this throughout, that in essence, this is based on the current information and the most current information that we have. So it is not in any form or fashion extant stunt. However, as most everyone realizes, as we prepare our budget, as we go through this process regarding planning, that we have to have a considerable portion of it based upon what we project as actual facts and figures. So at this stage of the process, we have certainly done the best viability based upon the information that we have. I will go through a PowerPoint, and then we will follow that up. Mrs. Blunt coordinated a facilitator to come in. We're going to give you a hands-on activity to help establish a, hopefully a unified direction from the standpoint of the board in terms of future communications regarding the budget. That has been a process that we've all gone through in various different functions. So we think that that will be very beneficial for you, the board, today as we talk about the budget. Following that, I do want to reference some upcoming activities regarding our STEM High School. And that will take place prior to leaving this particular area and moving into the closed session. First thing I want to do is to recognize Mrs. Parker and the effort that has taken place under her leadership and our financial team, financial department. Because in front of you, you have an incredible resource. And I would put that resource in terms of a budget document up against any resources provided to any school board in this entire state. In fact, this particular version of the budget document is more detailed than any budget document that I'm aware of, certainly any that have been provided to boards since I've been here at the central office. It is in much greater detail. There's been requests over the last few years for more light item specificity. You have it in one of them. So this will be a very valuable document. It will be one that you might struggle with trying to find specifics today as we go through my budget presentation. But understand that this presentation are big picture items that are supported when you go through this document. And it will take you time to go through this document. But I do want to recognize Mrs. Parker and her team for putting together this excellent resource. Mrs. Parker, I'm just going to give you an opportunity to sort of turn it over to if you have any comments you'd like to make to the board. Those are comments regarding budgets, by the way.
I just thought I'd explain how the document is organized. The first two sections are generally the type of information that boards perceive about budgets at a very high level. The information behind the first tab is an overview of the budget. It begins about talking about our revenue uncertainty. At this point, several years ago, we thought we'd be through the R of funding, we basically know where we stand. But things haven't quite turned out that way. And you'll see that theme throughout Dr. Baldwin's presentation as well, that our revenue is so uncertain right now. And that has driven, to some extent, how I put this document together. A second thing that is shown in that first section is how the decline in revenue over the period of the Great Recession has affected Bucky County Schools and the state of North Carolina as a whole. The chart begins with 2007-08, which is the most recent year in which we had full funding from the state for all the formulas. And it carries up through the end of the last fiscal year, which they can only measure our actual status with respect to other school districts after the end of the fiscal year, because they do that based on actual expenditures, not budgets, for pretty obvious reasons. Then there's some charts that aggregate information for all the operating funds. First, the governmental funds, because they function in a very interrelated way. The State Public School Fund, the local current expense fund, and the federal grants. To a large extent, what is funded from which source is just how the numbers most benefit us, how we can most leverage the funding. And there's a lot of interchangeability between those three funds. So I do a subtotal on now, just to show you the historical information, and then up through the current day of the proposed budget. I also have a column in for our other operating fund, which is an enterprise fund, the child nutrition fund, and then give you a grand total for all operating funds. The child nutrition fund, by law and regulation and generally accepted accounting principles, has to operate completely independently of the other funds. So that's why it's kind of off to the side. But still, a lot of our charts will show all operating funds as a whole. So that's why I've given you that and a total for that. And the information is presented again at a very high level by optic of expenditure, so you can see how much is salaries and benefits with a subtotal for personal services there, how much is then for other line items like commodities, contractual services, and non-program charges, which is kind of a strange term that the state uses, but includes inter-fund transfers, payments to government units, and unbudgeted funds, which we always have to have in those funds that deal with grants, because frequently, grant fiscal year is different than our state fiscal year, and we have to preserve some money unbudgeted in order to get through the whole period of the grant. The second section talks about variable cost factors. And this relates to another factor that Dr. Baldwin will be talking about in his presentation. There are some proposals at the state level now to radically change the way that we were funded. And for the first time, this raises a real concern about is the State Public School Fund really going to cover for its own employees the proposals that are out there? And with a change in the funding formula, that becomes much more difficult to determine. When you have the same funding mechanism year to year, you can pretty easily compare apples to apples and say, did it increase enough to cover the staff in this program a lot? If all of a sudden, you have a completely different mechanism for funding, the only way you can tell if you've gotten the money or not is to know what your total costs are and deal with the thing as a whole, rather than going program report code or PRC, which is the way the state budget comes to us, by PRC and doing it in a kind of micro way. Instead, you have to do it as a macro. And that's one reason I did the detailed line item budget, so we can see how much the total cost is. And when we finally know the revenue, say, okay, are we okay, or how much of a problem do we have? What I have done, if you look at the second section, there's some charts, and they show you for each fund, which of the proposals that are out there are going to have cost increases. And if you look just to the State Public School Fund, the impact of the health insurance increase, the retirement rate increase, the 1% pay increase across the board, and you add all those things together, that's almost $4 million for the State Public School Fund. And that becomes a big issue then, is the revenue really going to cover that or not? That section shows that for all the funds, obviously, at this time of year, we always worry about the impact of those things on the local current expense fund and the federal grants fund, because those don't automatically increase the way you expect the state funding to for those increases of the General Assembly Act. But this year, we have a concern about state also. That section ends with a long-range plan. And the amount of fund balance that it shows we can appropriate this year is backed into by looking at what we need to get just to the end of 14-15 with a zero fund balance, how much that year is likely to consume. We know what the current year is, or at least I have a pretty good projection of it. So what's left in the middle of those is what we could appropriate to the current, to the next year's budget to help it balance. Sections three through seven are basically the same information we've been getting each month as part of the budget amendment, that supplemental line item detail. The only difference is it now has a column added for the base budget for 13-14. And how that base budget was constructed, it's pricing out the people where they are currently paid right now, that doesn't mean they'll be able to be paid from there next year. Again, go back to my comment about uncertainty and revenue. But taking that as a whole is what we have to fund. It's looking at our existing staff. The only thing that has been plugged in there is what we know for sure, the retirement rate increase and the health insurance rate increase. It does not reflect any salary increase right now, because we don't know what that would be. But that's what section two does, it gives you those amounts, so you can see how much additional would be required to fund a particular salary increase. Section eight, oh, and on the base budget, it just takes the non-personnel items as they are currently measured. It's just strictly carrying everything forward as a baseline to help us assess where we are. The final section under tab eight is something that's been requested periodically. It's the total cost of each position that Bucky County Schools has. And we've used some new software this year to generate that, it's why it looks a little bit different than it has in the past. When you see the word bonus under something, that's local supplement payment. What that software does, it essentially creates an annual payroll for every employee we have, and we use what's called a bonus program to plug in that local supplement. So when you see that, just know that bonus equals local supplement. You'll notice for employees that have more than one assignment, we have a great many employees that have a long job. They may be a bus driver, a custodian combination, or a teacher assistant, and a couple other different categories are worked in. You will see a local supplement payment generated on each one of those base assignments. And if they have longevity, it's shown as an annual payment there, and if they qualify for longevity, they'll have a longevity payment on each one of those assignments too. So you may look at somebody, and they'll have nine different entries, and then it adds up to a total. And I went through the report and highlighted the totals, so you can see those. It's alphabetical by employee. I just put the first few letters of their last name, so people could not pour in themselves in the report. And again, it isn't by fund, because they were funded from a number of different sources, and the only way to get a total cost by employee is to mix the fund information together. So that's the resource that you have, and obviously, we're not going to go through it today, but in our continual discussions, I think that will provide some valuable information to you.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. And I'm going to preface.
One question, I'm sorry, Ms. Parker. Is there a schedule in here that tells the supplement, or depending on the years of service? That is on our website, so I did not reproduce it in the document. And when you talk about the total cost of employees, is the longevity pay in here? Yes, it is. Where would it be included? It's called longevity. If you just page through there, obviously, not everybody qualifies for longevity, you have to have 10 years, but if you just page through there, you will find somebody sooner or later. Yeah. Where it says longevity, it says longevity. Yeah, the only thing that might be a little confusing, like I said, when it says bonus, you may think, well, I didn't know we're giving folks bonus. That's the way this program is able to put in the local supplement. It was actually structured from when the state used to do the ABC bonus pay for teachers, and that's why it's called bonus. But we were able to adapt it to make it work and project our local supplement. So just know when you see bonus, that's really local supplement. So is the longevity pay, the qualifications for that, is that on the website? Yeah, that's determined by the state of North Carolina, and that again is on the benefits website for personnel. All of that is out there. Can you send us the link to the supplements, the schedule for supplements, as far as what percentage is for each? Have you said it's on the website? Yeah, it's under the employment tab, and I think Ms. Lopez can easily do that. I think they're both probably on the same page, aren't they?
I believe it's also in our TAFR.
Yeah.
It's in the TAFR also, and in there every year.
I appreciate that question, because that reminds me to say to you, as we go through this presentation, if you have a question, simply ask it. I have a number of good resources that I may want to, from our staff, to help answer some of those questions. I want to preface the presentation that I'm going to give by asking you to take a look at page one of the budget document that Ms. Parker just provided you. Because again, it's a theme that I cannot overemphasize enough to. And the quote I'm going to use is listed under uncertainty about revenue available. "The amount of revenue available of Bucky County Schools for 2013-14 from both state and federal sources is less determinable than it has ever been before at this same point in the budget process, only three months before that new fiscal year will begin." Now, I've already spoken to Ms. Parker. Parker's been in this business for 20-plus years, so she's seen a lot of budget processes come through. I just can't emphasize that enough to you regarding the figures that you're going to see. Ms. Parker also referenced legislation. This is the first time that I'm aware that we've done this type of presentation to you, or that I'm actually going to identify certain legislation that has, it is not law, it'll be divided between the House and the Senate, but they have impact upon what our, how our budget will be projected. In fact, I think Ms. Jackson, we gave copies of all of those pieces of legislation.
They're in their packets.
They're in your packets, so we will go through those. I won't spend a lot of time with them, because again, you'll need to take those, look through them for more specifics. But I do, for the first time in this process, I think it is important to identify those. Now, with this uncertainty, I do think it's fair to say that because of where we are with the legislature and the governor, from just the political standpoint, that it does seem reasonable that we will have a finalized budget much earlier than we have in past several years. But again, I want to emphasize that aspect of the uncertainty from a number of standpoints with where we are today in terms of projecting this. Ms. Parker, I'm going to try to think about this microphone, I'm going to move it to where I need to be. I should recognize how high-tech the super tan has become, normally my clipper is Mrs. Blunt. Mrs. Blunt is seated, I'm actually going to use if I can turn it on. Something I'll be able to.
I'll have to turn it off.
I turned it on. Okay, let's begin. I'm going to start with several slides that the majority of the board will recognize, because you've seen them before. But I think it's very important that we review, because as we project what the budget for 13-14, the odds will be, I think it's very important that we recall and review where we have been and how we have gotten to the current point in the budget, where we currently are, and how that impacts where we will go. Remember, we coined the term the new normal. In fact, our SACS meditation committee liked it enough that they decided it's one of the recommendations. It's a concept, and I truly believe that, I think our staff believes this. Continued dependence, and I'm going to show you slides that will validate this, but we still have a continued dependence to some degree on federal funding to replace the loss of state funding. Now, you've heard me say this, when I talk about state, local, and federal, the difference between federal funding versus state and local is that federal funding, it can recur, but in grant form, there's always a start, and there's a clearly defined, and that's important to understand. In fact, about these first six slides, I would probably collapse under the theme of school budget one-on-one. But understand, there's a difference there. With federal, you have it, but you understand that there will be a very clearly defined time when it's gone, unlike, for the most part, unlike what we see with state funding. We have had reduced staffing in many areas. In fact, I'm going to show you a slide again, a review of lost positions. And I think what you're going to see is that these staffing losses have been spread out across the entire system, they just haven't hit one particular area. State funded mandates, and I think that's where we're going to go back to some of the legislation, and that there are already additional mandates that we believe are going to become law that are unfunded. So we have to determine how do we, where do we find the funds to make sure that we follow through what the law's going to require. New program initiatives or enhancements, we've got to consider local resources. I think this is going to be a theme that we'll continue to run through this presentation. As you are aware, three primary sources. And what are those three sources? State, federal, and local. This is the current percentage of each. So again, primarily, our revenue comes from the state. But again, remember the dependence that we talked about in federal funding in '07, and this was prior to the budget challenges, the downturn in the economy. That federal funding that we depended on was 7%. It's currently at 11 in 2000, excuse, 2011 and '13, it's currently at 11%. Now, what happened in 2011, a good percentage of that federal funding, if you recall, was in stimulus and stabilization. We have run out of the cycle of stimulus and stabilization funds. What remains is primarily edge jobs. I'm going to look at a slide that actually showed that.
Oh, I have a question about state funding. That's, I think it's county, I'm sorry. The local funding, the 26%, does that include the capital outlay as well as Article 39, sales tax, or is it just the supplement?
This is. This is operating. In fact, that's a good question, I appreciate you asking. The focus today is going to be on operating funds. What the work session you're going to have later in May, Mr. Socia will head up, will be capital funding, and that's a very important distinction. In fact, that's probably a slide we left off in the part. I think this is a very, very important slide, very basic slide. We've got to remember that 84% of our operating budget, that's currently at ballpark, around $239, is that it's tied into people, staff, salaries, benefits, people. Very important to understand. I talked a little bit about the reductions, about where we've come following. And also referenced that, as you look at the various areas where reductions have taken place since the two years, 2008, 2009, you will see that for the most part, it's across the system, when you look at various personnel functions. Now, just to clarify, when you talk about personnel, you have two very general areas. The first is what we call certified staff. Of course, there is licensure that is required, that thanks to a significant chunk of Ms. Lopez's personnel time to make sure that we follow all the licensure requirements. So those positions that are certified, that they require the licensure, are in red. The ones that are in teal green, those represent non-certified positions. In a general term, they are support positions to assist certified personnel. 139 positions. And again, you can see from the standpoint of starting the central office, the assistant principal, by the way, we're using the number seven position, but understand that a high percentage of that elimination was in months of employment. So where we had APs at the high school level, for example, that were there for 12 months, they were reduced to 11 and 10. Counselors and social workers, and that is a 3.5 positions. And that point may be hard to see, but it's important. And that point may be hard to see, but it's important. It's not 35 positions, it's 3.5. I think at this stage in time, we'd be a front page news story in that being 35 positions with the needs out there for our kids. Because that is, that is our instructional support. That would be one of the two primary categories of instructional support. It's very less. Yes?
Correct on that. Loss of principal positions, these actual positions, the loss of those are currently some positions.
That's over and above.
Yeah, those are actually actually positions.
Oh, positions. Well, I stand corrected then. That is actually seven assistant principal positions.
That's separate issue.
And on top of that, then, we need to understand that we have reduced most of the funding. Thank you for correcting. Wish you had corrected. Thank you. Yes, I could ask that. That's a very important one. Yes?
I just have one quick question on that. Just, I was just curious, with the loss of hours, does that change their benefits?
Of hours? Good question. When we talk about hours, we're probably going to be referencing more the non-certified positions because they're hired on an hourly basis. When you talk about certified positions, those in red are on contract. So months of employment, does that impact the benefits? No, did not impact that. It's just the length of the board.
But it would, it would, if I'm right, it would have an impact on their local supplement.
So, so say that, you know, that you had the AP that was there for 12 months and now they are only working 11, 10 months. But with, but with the condition of the decrease in salary, are they also having a decrease in benefits? And I'm talking vacation time, but whatever, I guess what else should they do?
Okay.
I can, I can take it if you'd like. First of all, salary means that their retirement income isn't going to be as high because their retirement benefits based on that. Also, their social security is based on that. Their rate of vacation, rate of approval is less, but they're also working fewer months and they don't have to take vacation during the month they're not working. So their health insurance is maintained, and that's the big important thing to remember. There's no difference. Yeah, there's no difference in the health insurance provision for somebody who works 10 months versus working 12. We pay the same. And as far as you go through the detail, you see that for, like a custodian, a 10-month custodian, that health insurance is a huge proportion of their total cost. But for a 12-month administrator, it's a much lower proportion of their total cost.
But that's an important question because I'm going to turn Ms. Lopez's ass for two aggressive from the standpoint of non-certified staff on an hourly basis. And how does that impact the benefits?
For a non-certified staff with a loss of hours, you have to maintain six hours to keep health insurance and to continue to contribute to retire. So for those folks, when we can cut back, when we've listed them there as physicians, as FTE physicians, but that need assistance, that could be four people who had combination jobs who then went below six hours and lost their benefits. Because there's, we tried, we made these cuts in the past, we tried to best our ability to keep those and benefits, but the benefits was not, we were not all of them.
So the minimum is for a non-certified employee, they have to maintain six hours a day?
Thirty hours.
Again, basic budget terms. Physician allotment, and this is, this is, again, a very critical slide. When we consider that there is discussion from the legislature in terms of completely revamping how state funds are allotted to schools. Currently, when we talk about physicians, we talk about personnel. That funding comes in two different categories. It comes to us based upon physicians, a certain number of physicians or months of employment, no matter what they cost. And in the example that we've given, classroom teachers, principals, instructional support, again, it's simply physicians. The second form of that funding currently is in a dollar allotment. And it's a specified dollar amount of support. And the example there is in non-instructional support, central office support, including testing, transportation, or child nutrition, media. Now, that is a very important concept to understand because when you get out into the private business world, it's not physicians and dollars. It's dollars when you talk about their staffing and their hiring. So that's what really currently makes us somewhat different because we get compared a lot to the corporate world. So it's a very important concept to understand. The term that is being used that we're hearing is called block grant funding. So to oversimplify that, there is discussion in Raleigh that the restructuring of those allotments may simply come to each one of the 115 LEAs receives a block amount of money with the flexibility to use it the way that you deem it needs to be used regarding personnel. If you consider the current structure of physicians and dollars, you can see how that block grant concept, whether or not that's good for Bunkin County or whether or not that's bad for Bunkin County, all depends upon what that amount of money is. Because of the advantages that we currently have regarding physician allotments. Okay? ADC transfer. Certainly, we do not have the flexibility that we had five years ago in terms of transferring the funds from physician allotments to dollar allotments or between various allotment categories. But there still remains some flexibility in transfer. We're going to look at some legislation that focuses on, again, limited flexibility, but it's still increased over what we currently have. We think it's important, especially in lieu of the governor's budget. And by the way, again, just basis, there are three versions of the state budget that we will receive. We've already seen the first of those three, and that's in the governor's budget. And what we have done for the past five years in terms of our budget planning is as each one of the three, the second will be the Senate, by the way, will give us their version. And then we will see a House version come. And actually, there's four versions. The most important one is the fourth, which is the finalized version. That's where hopefully all three come together and the finalized the fourth version. What we have done and what we are presenting today is the only version that we have ready to at this point in time is the governor's. So we've taken the governor's budget and we specified based on that structure what it would look like for Bunkin County schools to the best of our ability. When you look at the governor's budget, you're going to see the area of teaching assistants. Talk about this a little bit later. Teaching assistants is going to be a more focused in terms of budgeting. So we think this is a very important slide for you to see. When we talk about instructional assistants, we need to realize that there are four broad categories there. There's first, K through three, classroom assistants, elementary school. Then we have assistants that fall into the second category that actually can run all the way from K through 12. And those are specific to remediation assistants, media assistants. We have computers, success maker labs, we have assistants for those labs. And then we have general assistants. Primarily, you see general assistants in grades four, five, and six. And then because we have in-school suspension as a component of the discipline program at the middle of high school, we have assistants there that coordinate the program. Then we have instructional assistants that fall under the umbrella of exceptional children. Mrs. Clemmons facilitates that group of assistants. And then Title I, where Mrs. Nering facilitates that group. So four categories. When we talk about personnel areas and we talk about in terms of when we have to look at potential reductions that could impact personnel, again, we're looking at two basic categories. The instructional support, guidance counselors, school psychologists, social workers, media coordinators. If you recall, the last two years, we put that as one of those three areas of emphasis in terms of funding priorities. And we did that because we felt that primarily because of what's happening in our communities or what has happened with the economic downturn, that more and more, we were seeing our needs for our counselors, our school psychologists, our social workers to assist with issues that we were seeing in our schools. We also talked a lot about our media coordinators, and we connected them very strongly with the technology piece. And what we've said throughout this school system is that we view the media center now as a hub for technology in each and every school. If that's the case, then we are certainly dependent upon those media coordinators and those assistants in the media centers to be able to help facilitate the technology needs from an instructional standpoint in the school. Then we have non-instructional support, custodians, clerical staff, office personnel, not only in the schools but here in central office. And again, a reminder that when we talk about state funds and personnel, we've got to realize that state funds do not, in any way, shape, or form, cover the complete cost of providing staffing out at our schools. We are dependent upon local funding to help supplement that. In some areas, we are much more dependent than others. But again, key concepts. Okay, let's talk more specifically about what we're looking at in terms of the years ahead, specifically 13-14. We know from the standpoint of federal revenues, again, remember, we have a start and we have a stop. So edgy jobs, that funding which represents $2.7 million comes to an end to close of this year. We also have school improvement grants of about $949,000, and that's primarily tied into our community high school. We're also aware that sequestration is now on top of us. Now, what we have been told from the standpoint of, from DTI, and you can see that there are specifically five areas that are impacted with sequestration. What our directors in each of these areas have been told is to calculate a loss of 5% of these federal funds for 13-14. What we have to keep in mind is over a three-year span that that will increase to 9%. But for 13-14, for budget purposes, we've been told to calculate 5% reduction. And you can see in those specific areas, exceptional children, IDEA, $288,500, Title I, specifically in the areas of reading remediation, $296,000. Title II, which a lot of professional development is tied in there, requirements for professional development, $44,000. Our ESL migrant, which also falls under Ms. Nering's office, Title I, a loss of $15,600. And then CTE, career tech ed, Mrs. Chee facilitates that. That's $15,000. Yes?
You said, sorry, let me get in here. The revenues will end at the end of the year, the decrease will happen at the end of the year. Does that mean December of 2013 or at the end of the school year in June?
Well, Ms. Parker, I'm going to charge you because you.
It means at the end of the federal fiscal year, which is September 11th. Just a little bit.
Well, my multiple choice question didn't even have answered.
That's, that's a good question.
The federal year.
Right, that's a very good question. You got to, you're only eight with number two.
That's why we have to have the budgeted funds. The federal fiscal year is October, October, September, November. They changed it in order to get their budget act together. I actually was in the profession when I had them. It worked for one year, but at the end of the year, they're still beyond again. You know, unless they kept rolling it forward every year.
So these losses will be, we will be impacted by these losses October 1st?
Correct. We go to the next slide because, again, that's a very good question. But realize for budget purposes, if it impacts personnel, we're not going to be able to wait until October 1st regarding loss of personnel.
Nor are we going to say somebody has to leave.
That's right. More specific information regarding sequestration in those four areas. Impact of edgy jobs, what does it look like now? 10.5% of overall funding firmly in instructional assistance and non-instructional support. If you recall our previous basic slides, talked about those categories. Here's the more specific impact of sequestration. That's a total of $659,100. In the area of special needs, loss of 10 full-time assistants. In the area of Title I, 17.5 halftime reading assistants. Under Title II, remember, that was primarily professional development. So that will, that's area that we've taken it there. And then under CTE, classroom materials and supplies. Okay, so that's a little bit more specific information regarding what those particular percentages look like then. Okay, remember, I said that we had the governor's budget. So we've taken that, and here's what it looks like. When we look at 2000 current appropriations, the governor's budget would impact us by a 50% reduction in teaching assistants, K through three. Now, the governor's budget actually says this. It actually puts the emphasis on teaching assistants K1 without assistants grades two, three, or higher. So that's, that's the loss. Okay? Now, we're somewhat different in that when you compare us across the state, we held to believe that kindergarten through third grade is important, or to say that over and over. So we fund it accordingly, but we fund by a formula. Currently, kindergarten, first grade, we have one assistant in each of those classrooms. Second grade and third grade is one assistant per 2.5 classrooms. You're impressed? I remembered that, Ms. Lopez. That formula. So it's based on a formula there. Beyond that, grades four, five, and beyond, we do have general assistants. We do have remediation assistants. They're involved at that level. But that K3 is something that we sort of held is very important to us.
And which, those positions are considered full-time? Is this full-time features assistance?
K1.
Like the K1?
Yes.
Is it full-time?
Eight hours.
Eight hours, teacher assistance.
Yes.
Yes.
Aren't we, haven't we lowered the class size for K through three to kind of accommodate that? Does it have something to stay? Band-Aid?
It's like, but kindergarten through third. It's not bad, but kindergarten through third grade, that's the formula for us.
We've lowered the class size.
Eight K1.
Right, I mean, we have the same class size required, that's getting there.
And they lowered the, uh, pretty much.
They, no, not 20,000, I mean, I'm not in a character to discuss that, but we, we have the average, the usual in each K through three classes. Is that a problem?
And we're going to see some legislation that's completely going to take that off the table back in both the House and Senate.
We do have the lottery money capability of using that to fund assistance in K through three.
Well, we don't, the state does, because, but you're absolutely right, the state does use a portion of the lottery funds for reduction of class size K through, that's absolutely right. But again, it would be a mis-known to think that we actually control that aspect on the state. We have an increase in reversion, if you recall last year, you're going to see a slide on reversion, that essentially the legislature looked at taking some lottery funding and so we were held part of us for a year in terms of additional reversion. That is back on the table for 2013, 14, and that represents 313,700. There's some positives regarding the governor's budget, and one of those is in the area of instructional supplies, it increases the funding by 170, almost 174,000. And then there's also an increase in textbooks to the governor's budget. So both of those are positives. Read to achieve, we're not quite sure if the governor has made an attempt, we're going to talk about some legislation that requires, it's focused on grade three, requires, focused on reading achievement, and summer school, that was an unfunded, essentially an unfunded mandate that we talked about. So the governor's budget addresses that, but we're just not sure yet how that, how that funding, what that funding will actually look like for us, but it will certainly be welcomed.
So, so right now, with the governor's budget, if you add to the math, it's like a little over $4 million reduction in funding to Buckham County schools.
Primarily in the area of loss of teacher assistance.
And you said that the governor's budget, you feel like the governor's budget is wanting to fund teacher assistance in K1, and then the, is that correct?
Yeah, but again, and I, thanks for that question, because I've got to be careful that you understand that when the state, state says they're going to fund teacher assistance in kindergarten, that doesn't mean that we get the equivalent amount of money for us to put assistance in kindergarten. It's not going to reach that amount.
It's not by person?
That's correct.
It's a pot of money.
That's correct, that's correct. That would need to be supplemented in order for us to be able to do it.
Yes.
Okay. Good question. Okay, we talked about reversion, and this is something, again, that I think we cannot forget, that again, since, since 2009, 10, there have been reversions, and we've changed the term, at one point in time it was adjustments, and I'm not sure what it is right now, but basically they're the same, it's the same, we just don't see this funding. We essentially lost this funding that wasn't placed. So 10, 11, you see that amount, it was 5,327,936, that increased in 2011, 12. Remember, this is, we've got to consider this on a recurring basis. Now, I'm willing to identify a bill in the House that attempts over a three-year span to allow school systems in the state to recoup that reversion or adjustment.
Oh, recoup it, but just, we don't have to pay that.
That's right, that's right. That's confusing, isn't it?
It was 6 million dollars up there, aren't they?
That's right, that's right. And in 12, 13, there was a reduction, still at 6 million, 6.1 million, and then we had the increased reversion for 13, 14, that would put that total at 6,480,320.
Is there any talk of changing that? I know so many school board members have been unhappy about the reversion, and if the legislature was addressing getting rid of that whole concept?
Well, and that's what the House bill, you've got a copy of it, I can't remember the number exactly, but you have a copy of a bill that does exactly that out of the House.
Dr. Baldwin, I have one quick question, Ms. Parker. When we look at the, in section one, the actual 2011, and actual 2011, 12 expenditures, for example, it says on the state public fund, 126 million and change, does that figure include the reversion?
Um, this is what we were actually able to spend.
Okay.
So the reversion is subtracted out, because we, one of the things that I think people sometimes don't understand, we never actually get any funding from the state.
Right.
They just authorize us to submit warrants on the state treasures account, and we can't spend the way they authorize.
So this was the amount of state funds that we were actually able to use?
That we were actually able to spend. I spend every dime.
Right. All right. Let me get it more. Okay, again, staying along with the theme of the governor's budget, the state budget, what would this level of teaching assistant funding mean for us if we did not supplement it with additional funds, we found additional funds? Here's what it would look like to maintain, to use those state funds. We would be looking at an additional reduction contract. If you can recall, I think it was two years ago that we reduced that contract to, three years ago, we reduced our assistance contract from 215 days to 210. One of those responses would be a further reduction from 210 to 205 days. In addition, the hourly rates would change. Chairman Reimhardt pointed out that currently in kindergarten, first grade, we have eight-hour assistance in each classroom for kindergarten, we have eight-hour assistance in each classroom for first grade, that would change. In the kindergarten, we'd now go to six hours per day, and then first grade assistance would go to four hours per day. There would be no second or third grade teaching assistance. And then we would maintain, we currently have one computer lab assistant, a minimum of one in all of the schools that have the computer labs at the elementary level. We do have 11 of those elementary schools that have a second lab, and we currently have a second lab assistant in those labs. So what it would mean is that those 11 that currently have two, would now only have one, and all of those computer lab assistance positions that would remain would go to six hours versus eight.
Dr. Baldwin, then that would mean that those first grade assistants that were changed to four hours would lose their benefits.
That's, that's exactly right, unless there was some combination with some other function, bus driving cafeteria.
To get to six hours so they can maintain their health.
Yes.
This is a great.
Thinking about potential strategies to address that. If you recall, we identified, and again, now, remember, this is the governor's budget, it's not the final budget, but it's what we are working off of. We looked at that, we looked at an ABC transfer total, instructional supply textbook increase, that could move to assist with our situation with our teaching assistance. K1, that's 1.1 million dollars. Then we could, we currently have 14 general assistants, those are grades four, no, yeah, four and five, and we would eliminate those positions, they would move again to K3 level, that's an additional 422,000. And what would that do if we took that, one, basically 1.5 billion dollars and reapplied it to the kindergarten, first grade teaching assistant structure? It would allow kindergarten classroom assistant at six hours per day, it would allow the first grade system to move to six hours per day to accommodate the benefits. We would also be able to look at second and third grade, and basically, it's about 75% funding and hours in the current allotment that we have now in our, our elementary school. We would still remain the one six-hour per day computer lab assistant. So that would be an option for us, Mrs. Franklin's point regarding the benefits at the first grade level. Okay, we also have, there's some additional components to the governor's budget. There's a 1% pay increase across the board, increase in pay in the governor's budget, and that's really for all state, correct, all state boards. There is also an issue about unemployment compensation, and Ms. Parker, I think I'm correct in this, we've got a 1% upfront, but that's actually going to represent two years, is that correct?
Well, we still will have to pay the inter-reers bill of September, at the end of next November, which is for the higher year, but simultaneously, we were converting to the self-practice system, so for one year, we're paying two years worth of unemployment compensation.
That's going to impact us through 13, 14. As each year since I've been here at Central Office, we've seen retirement, the retirement rate increase, at least the employer's portion of paying that, that will increase from 14.23 to 14.59, and then also the health insurance, insurance in terms of what we require. Now, the big question is, will the revenue provided by the state cover these costs for state-paid staff? Traditionally, they, they have covered those costs, but we don't know, that's yet to be determined. However, remember what I made regarding personnel, that state funds are not capable of covering all of the personnel needs in school systems. So it then becomes, falls on the back of local funding. If it's local funding, we then have, we're responsible for the increases that come along with those personnel increases.
Is it too early to tell what that dollar figure is a huge, I mean, is that 100,000, a million, 10 million?
It's, it's in your book, that's one thing I priced out, those increases that you see there not even counting, the 1% unemployment, or maybe I got one.
I think we got a slide coming up.
It's almost 4 million dollars in state funds. And your charts that show what those costs are for each one of the individuals.
I actually had a question about that. I was just a little confused, under the salary increase, it, I'm trying to find it, I'm sorry, but is there a cost of more of 1%? And then there was another line that said teachers, 1%, is that 2% for the teachers?
Exactly, that's one of the proposals, so I mean, 1% for everybody, but the teachers get an additional one. So you can add those two together to see what that proposal entails. Again, that's why I didn't put it in the detail, it's so up in the air, but I'm giving you the dollar amount so you can see what the impact.
Yeah, but it's potential, right now, we're working on the governor's budget, which is 1%. Okay? All right, I'm going to spend a lot of time with this because I've given you the resources so that you can look a little closer. I'm going to just take you through, at least today, unless something changed last night, didn't check it this morning, this is the legislation that we believe that you need to be aware of, that does have potential impact on either the budget or the daily operations of the school. The first is Bill, Senate Bill 516, public school regulatory reform. I'm going to also identify a House bill, and what, what we believe is when you have a Senate bill and a House bill that for the most part parallel each other, that that certainly does increase the probability that this is going to be law, once the two work out the differences. And in many cases, they're almost the same. The two, these two bills, for the most part, are the same. What does it do? It provides maximum flexibility in terms of your teacher ratio to students, in terms of your class size. The question that was asked, Ms. Lauter has talked about, this is one of two pieces of legislation that pretty much throw out the door, the aspect of the maximum number of students in a classroom, it would be flexibility for the particular school to determine. We would be responsible for reporting based upon the criteria in the, in the bill itself, so I'll let you take some time to look at that. Senate Bill 374, it also recognizes the flexibility in class size, but it adds another component of flexibility, and that is the transfer of funds between various categories. Now, the one area that it will not allow transfer of funding is into central office positions, I do want to note that. But it gives the flexibility in both areas, transfer between funding categories, and then also the flexibility in the class size, that's Senate Bill 374. Senate Bill 361, I really encourage you, and this is a very comprehensive, very long, very complex bill, but I'm going to encourage each and every one of you to find the time to read that thoroughly with all, all the bills that I have up on this slide, this is the one that may not as much have a primary focus on the budget or impact on the budget, but it has all the entire operations of the school and, and school performance first and foremost. It has six primary areas in it. The first is it allows state employees, allows them to volunteer in the area of literacy, comprehension, to, touring into our schools five hours per month. It recognizes that, good thing.
Do you know if that would include current school employees? Does that include if someone's doing that same job?
Chairman Reimhardt, I do not know, that's a very good question, I, I need to go back myself and properly look into this.
Well, the state law would permit it, but the federal law would not. I mean, the parallel standards that says if you're not a such employee, any employer shall not suffer or permit you to volunteer your time.
Second, it limits the testing block of time. For those semester classes, it would limit the testing window to be the last five days of the semester, and for year-long classes, it limits it, puts that blocking in the last 10 days of the school year. Okay? Third, there is some, there is a lot of language.
Dr. Baldwin, was that a part of the AP classes as well?
I think-
AP is national test.
Yeah, and, and there is, there is some exemption regarding international or national standardized tests, Pat, you're absolutely right, yeah. There's quite a bit of language regarding the standards for licensure, and a lot that is aimed at teacher preparation. So this particular section probably impacts our colleges and universities more than it actually does us. So, and a lot of focus, I noticed in reading that, a lot of focus on reading, and that's a central theme that you're going to see in this bill. School performance grades, now, this goes to an effect this, the end of this year. Okay? And what that means is that each school in the state of North Carolina, we're receiving grade from A to F. And again, I want you to just read through all the details, but to just give you a, a quick copy of that, if you're at the elementary level, a lot's going to be focused on the end-of-grade testing in math and reading, grades three through eight, and in the area of science, grades five and eight, correct, Ms. Lauter, grades five and eight. of science, grades five and eight, correct, grades five and eight. At the high school level, more complex, actually seven particular areas. Those will include, and of course, testing in Algebra I or Integrated I, English II, and Biology. In addition, graduation rate, along with ACT scores, along with, in the area of CTE, I think it's.
Word keys.
Word keys, which is indicative of college readiness, career readiness. And then there's also a category that looks at the percentage of your students in each high school that have moved on to attain an advanced math beyond, I think where it's that Algebra II, Geometry Tech Math II, so that percentage. There will be a performance grade based on those categories. There will be a separate, separate communication and identification about growth. So each school, it will not be part of the performance grade, but it will be an indicator that the public will see in terms of the growth in them, whether it, whether it was fit, whether it met the standard, or whether it exceeded the standard. That's what you can assume in this particular bill. A lot, and I can emphasize how much, discussion back and forth with various groups, both professional organizations, with public schools, as well as business organizations regarding the aspect of the performance grade, where does growth begin? Now, I'm going to tell you, there is a companion House Bill that emphasizes the growth much more strongly. This is the performance thing, but it's really important that you put some time and effort into, into looking at this particular bill, because I personally believe that there is a strong probability that this will be very close to a final, final version. There's also merit pay is referenced. It's referenced in relationship to the evaluation system. And what this particular bill says is, as the evaluation system becomes more reliable and valid in terms of the performance of individual teachers, then that particular system would allow merit play, pay to come into, they call it performance, I use the term merit, performance, play, pay, play, 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 pay to play, right, pay to play. Teacher tenure. This would impact us, I believe, beginning two thousand and fourteen, is that right? And what that would do, it would basically eliminate teacher tenure. And teachers with less than three years' experience would automatically go on one-year contracts. Teachers with three or more years' experience, beginning June two thousand and fourteen, is that right? That those individuals would go on contracts of either one, two, three, or four years. Now, what's required in this is very interesting that we have a lot of focus on, is from July one of two thousand and thirteen to December thirty-one of two thousand and thirteen, school systems are charged with actually evaluating that contract period for veteran teachers with three years' experience only. So in other words, we have to determine for those veteran teachers what contract they will move into. We would assume that the majority would move to the four-year contracts. Now, I can tell you so that you know there's a parallel that we've already been working in, and that is administrative contracts, primarily with beginning administrators. We do have some on one year, but majority fall under two- or four-year contracts. Correct?
Dr. Paul, would those contracts be, maybe wrong person, would they be a template, if you will, that every system in the state is going to use the same contract and adjust the number of years, one, two, three, or four? Or will all county schools be charged with putting their own contract for his own teachers, which may be different from Edward County, which may be different from Charlotte, Beckton, or the seven?
Don't be punchline information, your contracts, you have, with our law and science.
And they would come out of EPR, put on the state level, it's not much.
There are, what does specify the regular contract, but if you're a department, is this the most used, the same contract?
Yes.
Yes.
That is one of the primary questions that has come up through the Supervision Association, because our concern is, and I think it's a legitimate concern, that in terms of recruiting and retaining.
Yeah, and that's where I was, that's where my question was coming from, keeping and return, retaining and recruiting, and they're not all the same. You, you may create based on what somebody can do in their own system, or chooses to do in their own system, a different playing surface within the same state structure. That was, that's where my question was.
Okay. Very important to put some time and effort into Senate Bill 361. House Bill 469, again, it parallels the school budget flexibility, the teacher-student ratios, grades three through twelve, that's the companion bill. House Bill 452 is a fairly recent bill, and I hope you take some time to look through that, especially prior to next Thursday, because you're going to hear a presentation from our state school's task force. And what I think you're going to hear in terms of their recommendations, you're going to see a lot of parallels from this particular bill. It allows or offers matching funds in the amount of one dollar, local, that's to two dollars is provided for the state on SROs in elementary schools and middle schools. Doesn't fund entirely, but it gives some matching prices. Two to one. One to one, one dollar to one dollar, local to state, for counselors and social workers. This is a very comprehensive bill by the way. It also matches one to one, one dollar for one dollar, for panic alarm systems that would be provided in every school that would be linked to your local law enforcement. In fact, just reading through this last night, there will actually, there is actually a requirement that every school have this in place by the end of two thousand and fifteen.
This, so if we currently have more guidance counselors than the state, send us, do we then, can we do to our advantage this bill? I mean, it's not a dish, is it? In other words, if we had ten, what am I trying to say?
No, I understand what you're trying to say. In other words, if we happen to be above the average, does that hurt us in terms of qualifications for this bill?
If we had ten guidance counselors that we pay for on our own right now, can we retroactively get it so they cost half as much?
I can do that to our advantage, yes. As Parker, that's if state funding comes, you know, for any type of position, we have that type of the local, we'd be allowed to use the state money.
It all depends on the reputation.
Kind of the same with SRO, maybe.
The state school's plan component, I want you to read the cause, the thing I was so pleased with, especially with drills and requirements of the drills and requirements of having the first responders a part of the plan. In fact, I don't think we've done this officially, but this bill requires the state school's components to be an official part of every school's school improvement plan. But I think what you're going to see is that direction that we've gone over the past five years with our state school plans and our drills, already followed very well in this particular bill, which is a good sign. There's been a lot of work that's been put in this bill. I don't know where the money's coming from, but a lot of, a lot of effort's been put into it. Okay? House Bill 393, this is the bill that I referenced earlier. This has the endorsement of the State School Works Association, the NCASA. This is essential funding for public schools. Basically, what it does is it goes back and looks at areas of either unfunded mandates or reversion, and in attempts to identify funds to essentially catch us up. It also includes an increase in teacher salaries. It also funds, for example, currently, we've got a big question mark in terms of how ACT is going to be funded. You recall, that's required now for all eleventh graders to take. We also have a requirement for PLAN, which is their tenth grade version, and we also have a requirement for EXPLORE, which I think is their eighth grade version, is that right? Okay? But it's not funded yet, but this provides that funding for, for students to take the test. So this is a, from our standpoint, this is a very, very friendly bill for us. I'm not sure where the money's coming from, but it's a friendly bill. House Bill 334, this, by the way, has been, has been promoted and written, represented by Nathan Ramsey and Ken Moffett are the primary sponsors. This is specific to Bunton County. This allows us the flexibility to article undesigned funds in Article 39. Same thing, undesigned funds in Article 39, that can be used for, in digital learning, whether it be digital devices. It includes professional development. And remember, we talked about how crucial it is when we start increasing the amount of instructional technology devices into our teachers' hands. It's got to come with training and professional development. It has got to come with staff and support to handle the devices. So this is a very welcome bill. I have, I think I've worn out their, their emails, thank you, to sponsors. Very important to read through. This also parallels two bills in the Senate and the House, Senate Bill 119, House Bill ninety-seven, that basically do the same thing statewide to allow undesigned lottery funds to be used for technology. Now, again, remember, when we said there's parallel bills, there's a very good chance that this is going to pass in some form or fashion. So I think with that direction, that, you know, there, we do need to discuss fairly soon what that's going to look like in Bunton County school for thirteen years. I think, and I will go ahead and stop and say, say it to this point, that one of the worst things we can do is take every dime that we have in Lottery thirty-nine, if it comes to pass, and immediately put it in technology devices and just throw it out the system. I think that is a, that is a recipe to disaster. I think we've got structures in place, we have intact committees, we've got a lot of opportunities for stakeholder input. We talked about a pilot, by the way, in grade seven. We could expand some pilots, but we cannot forget, we all want those technology devices in every one of our kids' hands. We can't forget when we put the devices in the schools. We've got to have training, we've got to have rules and regulations, that's what's coming with BYOD, smart thing to do. We've got a foundation for this, to launch from. And we've got to have support staff to make sure that we maintain the devices that are there. Okay. Senate Bill 337 and House Bill 443, those are the final two. I think it's important for you to take a look at those. They do have some ramifications regarding, this is primarily the charter school board, it, it structures a board separate to the state or education, the charter school, but there's some implications, especially the House Bill. That's the one I would ask you to focus on, House Bill ninety-seven, excuse me, House Bill four, four forty-three, that has some, that opens up doors regarding funding areas that have been challenged in court over several years. And so the impact to those increased funding options for charters, charges to access public schools would have an impact on us. So take some time and read through those. Okay? I know we've not done this before, but I just felt like, again, we're going to sort of, I need to at least put in front of you what's, there is potential there and what the direction appears to be going with the legislation. So we just felt like this was the best way to do that. Okay. Here are the numbers. You recall that previous slide? What are the funding gaps from these state actions? Remember that this is the government budget, this is our final budget, it's the best we have. What does that one percent raise for all of our staff mean? And remember, this would be local impact. Okay? We assume that the state, it's probably a deadly assumption, that we assume the state will cover this one percent raise. It's still three hundred and fourteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars for locally paid employees. The premium that Mrs. Parker exposed about, the unemployment compensation, two hundred and eight thousand dollars, we anticipate that's going to get us to thirty-four. And then the health insurance retirement rate increases, you can see the figures there. And then the loss of the federal general support, that's, again, that's in the edgy jobs. Other funding gap, we do not know for sure, I know Mr. Fox is checking this on a daily basis, but it is our understanding that the new power, there will be a rate increase. Our best estimation at this point in time is a hundred and sixty-one thousand. Home-based products, well, let me explain that a little bit. We've talked to you about Power School, we've talked to you about Homebase. If you recall, Mr. Frisby coming in and doing a presentation and highlighting the technology. We're excited about this, it's going to replace NCYS, it is going to be just an incredibly improvement over our current NCYS system. But in order, in order to have all of the components of it, what we understand from the state is there would be a charge of four dollars per student. That is going to come out to be about a hundred and five thousand dollars. I've got to put the exact figure in there, cost for us. We're going to show you a slide that came from the parent survey. If you recall, we had an exercise where we well-identified key initiatives, and then we took your ideas and sent them out to the fund survey. And one of those areas that we saw a high response was the parent portal. And we talked about that, how it gives that immediate interaction, immediate feedback for parents. That's part of what that hundred and five thousand dollars is paying, so we can certainly add to that. The additional funding is in staff. There is no way we can transition with what's going to be required, this new power school, without helping our schools by adding some hours to our personnel out there. Currently, we've got schools, elementary schools, with four hours, three hours, three and four, and there is no way those schools are going to be able to transition into this new system with all the requirements that it requires. Again, it's sort of like putting the technology out there. We know it's important, we all, I think, want to do this. We've just got to remember, we can't forget that there's support that has to come with it. So that's part of that. Technology support staff, this is about as basic as we can get. It would add three additional staff to already, how many do we have in the state? Okay, four. This would add three additional. These are trainers, these would be out of the schools, working directly with staffs regarding the increased technology and using the technology for instruction. This would also include three additional staff in Dr. Fooch's department. Again, that has to be in place in order to support additional technology that we can. Again, that has to be in place in order to support additional technology that we anticipate that's going to be out in our schools. So that's why we've included that.
So you're saying the total is six?
A total of six. Three in instructional technology focused on really the teaching or training, and then three in the technology department focused on support. And that's, that's pretty, we started with, I can assure you, with a much, much higher figure than that, and we just put, what could we, on a minimum basis, to...
Do either of those bills, as far as the lottery funds or the local bill with Article 39 sales tax that address digital learning, they provide more staffing?
That's a good question, and the answer to that is no, they do not. What they do provide, though, is professional development fees. So we could, we could basically help with some of the training and supplies, but not staff, not staff. This is a slide that we've had before. You've seen this, Ms. Churchill may not have seen it before, but this is one of our basic slides. As you know, we're currently looking at our fund balance, currently using our fund balance in order to keep our ship moving forward. Just a reminder, it's Mercedes camp. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense to use for recurring expenses. I got to tell you, we're doing that right now. Why did we do it? We're buying time. We said it's overdue, it allows us to buy some time, okay, without huge drastic cuts. Policy 501, if you recall, the stabilization reserve that we're required with one month's operating expenses. That's 4.3 million. And again, as we look at 1415, I'm going to show you that slide. Do you remember this slide? You have it in front of you, you had it. In fact, when we met with advisory teams, I can tell you, I put that in their hands. So you've got to continue to remember that as we move toward 1415, we run into that, that challenge in terms of using our, really running through our fund balance. Okay. How much additional fund balance? If you look at that chart, you'll see it was 3.7. How does it break down? It's primarily to cover the edgy jobs, the loss of edgy jobs there. There's an additional $1 million. A lot of that is one-time or able-to-be-faced-out costs. The unemployment compensation is a good example, because we have to backtrack to pay, and that's going to be a one-time cost to us. Okay. What other qualifies for use of fund balance? We included the Duke Power rate increase. Now, there's other ways we can, we can address this as well. But we included that because, you know, we just don't know going forward what our winners are going to be like. And that rate, even though they'll increase, we could get, we could be offset. And I'll tell you maintenance, they come to you over and over with presentations about the energy efficiency and the money they're sending back to the school system. So I'll tell you what, they've been on, they've been on this one for quite a while, and so they're, they're looking at every angle they can with systems with bringing back more efficiency to offset. Other insurance increase, $90,000. That has to do with the liability, workman's comp, what else did I miss? And property tax that we, and that is an estimate, by the way. And we estimated on this one, what we think is high.
Property insurance.
Property insurance. Okay. See, we put our totals in there. ATM growth, we just don't know. We are projecting, I think, last figure I looked at, 170 students, is that the projected growth?
170.
Yeah, 100, okay, 170, 180. All right. Which of these increases are not good use? Well, if we have a salary increase, again, these are recurring. You have a health insurance rate, that's going to stay with us, retirement rate. The technology support staff, once we infuse them out there, I got a feeling it could be a mass riot if we tried to pull them once they're out there with those additional devices. Home-based product support, our feeling is, what's coming with this home base, we believe parents are going to be very enthusiastic in terms of what, what they're going to see with opportunities for the two-way communication. Again, this is about $1,808,000 in ongoing costs, and what we're cautioning is the use of that fund balance. Now, I say this because we're starting the segue into where Mrs. Blunt's going to go leading an activity. Remember the three sources that our funding comes from? They come from federal, they come from state, and they come from local. Local right now primarily comes from the commissioners. You've heard me say that a lot of what we're seeing with STEM is we're bringing more businesses, more professional agencies to the table, and I think it's ever been the table in the school system. Now, that's not necessarily just us, I think it's happened across the state. So again, but that's a local source. This is an important slide because we cannot forget, we have a strategic plan that was voted upon by this board and supported by this board, and our entire system now is operating under these four priorities. And I put this slide up here because I think we can already align our initiatives, some of our initiatives, in with these priorities, such as technology and global education. We had a lot of talk about rural languages. That falls under priority one. The reason I'm saying this is that I think if we start talking about initiatives, we want to make sure that they follow within the structure of the strategic plan. Safe school certainly falls under priority two. We made a decision to increase the alarm, the alarm systems in all elementary schools. That clearly falls under priority two of our strategic plan. The personnel, retain, recruiting, maintaining those quality teachers. Let me tell you, that was one of the highest, I'll show you a slide, we got the parent surveys, we had a lot of response that came back in from the community, and that was one of the highest needs that was supported by our community. We see STEM integration in there, again, innovative, effective educational programs. Priority four, the Power School and Homebase, again, that allows that accountability, it allows communication, tying those into our priorities. Things probably you get time to. I know Ms. Churchill had contacted you, and we would look at the, in fact, I put some information in your packet regarding the e-Board solutions. Did want to let you know, I had Ms. Jackson acting with communications and look at what that provides. The idea is to continue with paperless, to look at better efficiency, reduce paper calls. We've talked with those individuals. We do believe, Ms. Jackson, I'll pitch on the spot, too bad here, but what we did determine in talking with those sources.
Mr. Warren.
Mr. Warren, I think it's a, it's a good, it's a good option for us, but we've got to make sure to prepare with what we've already had in place with some of those functions, which is through our school wires, that has some, some parallel opportunities. And then we also, Mrs. Blunt, of course, she can step out of this, but she's also talked to an additional company that offers that. I believe it's something that we need to consider as more, I guess my recommendation to you is that we sort of make timing in with our new boardroom, our video, because I think this, whatever particular program we use, we need to make sure it integrates fully to videotape capabilities with all of us.
You can call them in there, it'll help to just additional, if you know they're not provided, bring them at the very back.
Okay. So I think you've got, you've got quite a bit of information on it. And we, we think that it's sort of a merit in, and maybe at some point in time, we're going to have both members come in and talk with us about this.
And I just wanted to say thank you to the staff for going above and beyond. I was very excited to hear that y'all were researching all the information, and really, it was much more than I even expected to happen. I really appreciate y'all taking the extra time to go the extra mile for my window shopping, basically. I just wanted to let everybody know that I really, really appreciate all the extra time you put into it.
Even with all this budget information to bring to you, it's important to win shop, and they'll lose that.
Always.
No.
Yeah, I noticed your recommendation is not to do the e-boards based on the system we already have being adequate. Is this something the school will put on the agenda to discuss, I hope, anyway, because there's a lot of data formats that e-Board has that would help us make informed decisions that we don't use currently. And that's the piece that I'm most concerned about, and not having that piece in our current system. So I hope that we can, you know, still discuss this and maybe, you know, even have a presentation. Presenters come to the board. I don't know if there's a plan to incorporate that into the agenda for next Thursday.
Come to the board. I think we give you a little bit more information on it, too.
My understanding is that the presentation, for somebody to kind of make the presentation is not, there's no cost to, to have that done, other than time.
I don't know if we need to take a consensus or if we make a motion more directed to put this on the agenda for today.
Work session.
If it issue more direct, it's during work.
Well, I would be interested, I could probably answer that question better if I looked at what's been provided towards. Not to try to shut you off, but if you were asked a question, we can look at what Ms. Jackson and everybody have done, I'd probably be able to answer for you, maybe the only one, but.
I agree with that. Ms. Jackson really did, I think you can call that part of her information.
She's here, just, you know, we just got to, but.
Yeah, she's been on the phone with the system, and she's, and had a lot of supporting right with the issue, too, so.
All right, thank you, thank you guys for looking at it, and we can talk about it with, maybe the next board meeting.
And I'll be happy to answer any questions from board members if that plays later that I found out from Mr. Warren in our conference session.
If you recall, we had an activity in a work session last year where we, at that point in time, we actually saw a ray of sunlight. Recall, we thought, well, you know, there might be some initial funding. So if there were, what would we see as an area for some type of initiative? But we also see that we tied it directly into the strategic plan, because we believe how important that is, that we've got a guiding, we have a guiding direction there in terms of that, in terms of that plan. We need to make sure that we connect as much as possible to what we as a system have signed on to, committed to. And if you'll take a look at the total section, you'll see some areas. Again, this survey went out to our parents and stakeholders, thought we had a fairly good response as the surveys go. You'll see the STEM initiatives, hands-on STEM, high school, 840 had a good response there. The new technology, that's certainly led the way. I don't think that surprised any of us. Again, isn't it nice that we're seeing some bills that tie into that? That's what's, what I'm excited to find. You see the importance that our stakeholders have put on the system principals and the counselors, they see that tied in so clearly with our safe schools, which is the school facilities, which I certainly thank this board, so they stand, recognize the importance of that. Professional development, where the, where our stakeholders see, see that in terms of importance. The funding to recruit, retain good teachers. They understand how important that is to the success of the system. And then that parent portal received a lot of support outside.
Is this on the website that parents are, are needing to go and write?
At the time, it was, it was, we did it at the beginning of May, so it was up for about four months. It's not there right now.
I'm just wondering, when, as discussing the budget, would it be good to let you put it back up?
In other words, send it back out again, and see if we get the same results?
Yes. No, no, I don't mean, no, I mean just the results.
Just put the results back up on the website, or I don't think you need to do it again if it was just, not even a year ago.
What we do have is the strategic plan itself is there and it lives there, and we're in the process right in the middle of updating where we stand and the progress on that since last year when it was adopted, and we're working on trying to make it, we can put it, we can put it up there now, which is the data that is kind of meaningless unless you really understand what you're doing. We're trying to craft it as a more meaningful way of looking at the strategic plan. But we, what we probably do is put that right, right there with this.
That's what I'm just thinking, in case somebody says, well, why are you spending the money on that? They could reference a number, they could go and see, oh, well, 845 people said they wanted technology.
I would like a copy of the questions again, because I'm always concerned about, there's always going to be potential for bias in surveys, and I can't remember specifically if there were any questions that people had.
I think I mailed those to you all, we'll leave yours over there.
Okay. We'll check that, thank you.
Just a reminder about the timeline. We've acquired, we have in place a preliminary budget adjusted to the county additional study. This process is going on here, and they understand that what's under 2015. Very unlikely that we'll have a final life budget by 2015, but it is important to recognize that date, because if there is some direction to approach our condition regarding assistance with local support, and really good things to keep that particular date in mind. Inner budget sort of target is for June 48, and I think there is a good chance that we'll have that final life budget by June, I don't know when it's due. And then the budget adoption, if you recall, that slide we actually changed, that went into February. I think our date was, was March 53rd, we're kind of waiting for the option, so I think there's a positive side to that, but we'll see if it's, if it's. Okay. I'm going to transition at this point in time to the, to the activity and hoping to have quite a discussion of this. But we want to start out the activity, just to remind you, this is, this is clearly blocking the school system and supported by the board. What we've said is our priorities. I guess my question to transition you into this activity is based upon what you see. And do these priorities hold?
Can I ask a question before we go to the activity, and it refers to these priorities too? Actually, I'm quite disappointed in the strategies for overcoming some of these losses of budget money. There are what I would call best practices out there. Other school districts have implemented to free up money for the classroom, and I wouldn't pay for us to cut, like you just said, classroom teachers or assistants without looking at those, those best practices other districts have put into place. I think you all know that Hank Hurst, who was the chief financial officer for DTI, his soapbox is about contracting out work for custodians and how at the Durham Public Schools he saved a million dollars even by doing this. We're not, I'm not seeing any of this in here, and these are things that have been happening for years, not just, this is not something new. Why aren't we looking at these other districts, the way that they're going about saving money? We've already, I know we've had the conversation many times about a tiered bus system, or maybe just integrating it possibly where we have a high concentration of students. or maybe just integrating it possibly where we have a high concentration of students. We've talked before about getting a third-party reviewer to come in and streamline, reorganize possibly our central office to look up a ways to free up money. I'm not seeing any of these strategies in this budget. We haven't held any budget hearings where we allow the public to come in and give us input. I don't know who was on the budget committee, I didn't get a list, if there were any school board members on that committee. I was never told who to talk to and say, you know, I'd like you to mention this at the budget committee meeting. You know, I'm glad to see the state legislature looking at introducing flexibility in use of the Article thirty-nine sales tax. But, you know, I don't, I'm not quite sure why we keep coming up with the same old tired strategies of cutting people. And the classroom, we just said it was a priority up there. Yet we're not looking for these other, these best practices. We're not looking at the two glaring, I mean, what's glaring at me right now? Back in 2010, when we did our five-year facility report for the state, it said we had three thousand one hundred and forty-nine empty seats in our classrooms. And that's before we added seventeen hundred seats in the two intermediate schools. We just do those facility reports and then they disappear. We're not addressing these issues because they are difficult, they are emotional issues. But we have to set that emotion aside and look at how we're spending our money. And if we're putting too much in brick and mortar and not enough in our classrooms focused on teaching and learning. You know, other facility reports study, there's methods that Wayne County has used to give us a, them a more functional model of capacity. And I don't see us looking at these models. The second glaring way to save money is to look at the supplement we're paying our non-certified people. Again, it's another emotional issue, but we have to set that aside when we look at these things. If we did a study, I think we'd find that ten point seven seven percent supplement for non-certified people is probably the highest in the state. I can't say that for a fact, but I don't know, because we haven't done, I'm not aware of a study. I would like to see a study done. I know, for example, Burke County gives a four percent supplement to their non-certified employees. And I like the word bonus, because that's truly what it is. And I see the private sector cutting bonuses right and left. Yet we have maintained that bonus. I know the non-certified people work very hard and, you know, don't make a lot of money and are deserving of extra. I think some counties have even stopped doing what they call the supplement for these people, but have incorporated it into their salary, which actually preserves and protects that money, which is something I'd like to see us do instead of calling it a bonus. I'm not saying it's wrong to give the ten point seven seven percent. But if we're talking about cutting teacher assistance in second and third grade, you know, we've got to look at these hard questions. I want us to look at the facility reports, and I want us to look at possibly surveying the non-certified supplements for other counties and see if we're in the range. Those are my big concerns that I just don't see addressed in this presentation.
Yeah, I mean, there's, yeah, there's a lot I could say, they're just on a kind of a big picture. I mean, I look at the numbers, we're funded a hundredth in the state. We're ranked eighty-fifth if you include all the funding in the state. North Carolina ranks forty-fifth in the nation in per student spending. And I think the problem is more of a revenue problem, because how do you use your resources? We're funded probably one of the poorest funding districts in the nation. If you add up all the, you know, if you think of North Carolina as being forty-fifth and you think of us as being eighty-fifth in North Carolina. And yet, we're continually doing a great job when it comes to testing, when everything you look at, all, you know. I see that, we talked about the return of investment, our return on investment is incredible. And so, we have, to me, we have more of a revenue problem than an expense problem.
Well, along with what you just said, Chip, something came out recently that rated all the school systems on different criteria as far as those school districts that were producing high academic achievement, high graduation rates compared to the cost they were spending. Bunkley County was not on that list anywhere. And I wish I had access to it from my personal computer, but I'll be happy to send that to you when I get home today. And where would that have generated from? I cannot recall, I am blocked from looking at one website where it was posted.
And was that a national thing or a local thing?
This was just North Carolina.
How many districts were included?
I included all the districts in North Carolina in the survey. I think it only went through twenty-eleven, didn't include twenty-twelve.
It was a survey?
I can't, no, it was, they precisely, no, it wasn't a survey. They precisely looked at how much spending, you know, the budgets, they looked at the activity. But I'll be happy if I haven't already sent it on.
You haven't, I haven't seen it.
Can I just ask one thing? It's my understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, this is not the first budget workshop that we're going to have. So are we going to have the opportunity to?
It's not the only budget.
Yes.
It is the first.
Yes, I'm sorry, thank you. We totally put that out. I'm just going to put it out there. But, so anyway, that's what I was going to say. We're going to have opportunities to brainstorm and work out ways, I mean, it's not just, it's a team approach, right? I mean, we're going to come up with ideas, y'all are coming up with ideas. I've actually thought of a way, it could be crazy, it would be the first time I've been told, but, you know, maybe there's a way to even offer the employees in the system some type of incentive to come up with ideas for cost savings. And then if those cost savings, the cost savings are implemented and there is a proven cost saving, that they, you know, may even possibly get a percentage of that back as a bonus. I do know that there are companies out there that do something like that. It, you know, it empowers employees and it really makes you start taking a hard look at things and, you know, thinking outside of the box of how, because, you know, we have, what, four thousand plus employees? That's a lot of brains to be thinking. So, you know, it's just kind of things like that, it's things that I think about how we can do this. Because as I keep saying, unless y'all pointed one last night, I haven't seen the inventory out there. So, you know, we do have revenue issues, so we got to figure out, you know.
I'm just trying to get it started.
I remember that.
I want to transition somewhat with that activity, but I do think it's important, involved to respond back to. What we presented, as we've done through the various years, we've taken one piece of that budget. At times, we've had two, or three. So we're responding and looking at it in terms of what the governor's budget, should the governor's budget clearly went to reduce teacher assistance, to increase classroom teaching. Now, we don't know what that necessarily looks like, so you can see that portion of it calls it so, it's unknown. But that's what we presented, that's why this is a work session. You know, and I just made some notes down here, three-tiered bus system, privatized maintenance, efficiency study, redistricting, these are certainly, I mean, I've got staff prepared right now to chair to address each and every one of those. Those are also issues that I think we've heard it pass, so we're prepared to address them. Whether we do it in this work session or in the future, I think is the direction of the board. Because it's going to take, it's going to take additional effort. Let's go back and look for somebody, no problem whatsoever, we're putting it on the table, I'm suggesting that. We're ready to respond based on information that is further than this question.
Yeah, I think the problem is, it's April now, and May fifteenth is when our commissioner budget is due. And since maybe October, you guys have been meeting. And what I see is a status quo budget, I don't see any looking at creative ways. I mean, Amy has a great suggestion about that, but we should have been asking those people maybe in October for suggestions. We're coming down to the wire here, you know, June thirtieth is looming as well. And, you know, I feel like all this, this is just the same old, same old. I'm not seeing us try to be innovative, because if our goal is truly focusing on those teachers, those classrooms and learning, why haven't we put a hundred and ten percent effort into trying to free every single penny up that we possibly could through energy efficient more, I know we've done some energy efficient more. I'm just saying.
Well, these are certainly things that we have discussed in the past.
Yeah, I've asked that we have.
We are doing the same old, same old with the same suggestion we talked about.
But they're totally in.
They had it presented to us as to the board, and the board made the decision whether to go forward with them or not. Now, we can look at them again, but that's what the board wants to do. I have absolutely no problem with it. We look at three-tiered bus, that was presented to us at a board meeting.
There's no study done, that was nineteen ninety-nine. I would like to.
I'm not finished. Why do you interrupt constantly, interrupt? We went through that, but the board had a chance to go there. It's a board decision, it's not an individual decision. I want to commend the staff for their hard work, our staff looks for savings every day, okay? They try to put together what our priorities are as a board. And as the board, we'll decide what the administration has to do. And once this board makes the decision to go back and look at that decision a few months later, when nothing has changed, it is a waste of time. All right, go ahead.
Okay, I would just like to say, I mean, you know, I've mentioned before in the past, teacher have come up to me and said, you know, why couldn't we just have a suggestion box? This goes along with what Amy just suggested, you know, that we can put in ideas for cost savings. Nothing ever occurred, you know, I'm not aware of any.
Make the board directive and we'll put it on the agenda.
Okay, I'll make the directive right now.
It's too late to put it on this agenda for this next week. It's already set, but if you want to do it next time, we'll do it.
Yeah, I just want to bring up the fact that, I hope that, you know, when, will we have a chance as a board to give our input into the budget? I mean, I've been giving it now, and you're, you know, you're just yelling at me because I'm giving my input.
I was yelling at you because you interrupted me.
I apologize for that. But I submitted these cost-saving measures months ago. And apparently, you know, these are not my ideas, I keep emphasizing the point, but these are proven cost-saving measures used by other districts. I mean, if somebody did some research, they would discover that. And I think we are shorting our kids, you know, by not trying to do more to free up money for the classroom. And we're investing it all, you know, in operations and, like I said, brick and mortar. And, you know, we owe it to our kids to live with these. And I hope that they'll be taken more seriously and considered at the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, at our last meeting, when we had a discussion, we talked about, and I'll preface my comments with this, we talked about board members reiterating their comments and their ideas over and over again. And I'd like to call it to Ms. Baldwin's attention that we have heard all of these ideas multiple times and that we as a board have taken action in regards to these ideas, and we have decided against them. And Ms. Baldwin continues to take our time to discuss her ideas when we have, we've decided not to do that. And I would appreciate it if that was ceased.
I don't recall any formal motion that.
Ms. Baldwin, I believe you had a little bit of a memory problem.
All right, Ms. White?
Anybody need a break?
Yes, I need a break.
Hey, break, good.
Good seeing you.
How you doing, Aya?
Good, how are you doing?
I've just been getting these bleeps from Democrats telling me about what's going on in Raleigh today as we speak. They're telling me that nine folks want to head state religion. Yes, none of them are Democrats.
He was saying yesterday, I didn't get a chance to read this, did he make, he's a governor, he made two appointments to the state board?
You know, I don't know, I wasn't paying attention to that.
I need to go back and comment.
I could probably find it, too, but, so I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
He only upset something yesterday, I thought, about Chickama.
Well, he's, he has backed off on a couple of his, a couple of his budget cuts that had an impact on minority groups, minority committees in our state. And I guess people were very vocal about him, and he decided to be a politician, back off a little bit.
Yeah, we want to do everything in one year.
Yeah, not schools, just one year. Let's do it, let's have a gentle screw. Forty years. I will, too lazy to get up.
You'll find out.
Okay, I'll do it every one, it's due to. She said, we'll find out.
Angela, how you doing? Yes.
With your eyes okay?
My eyes are okay, yes. I've got problems with the other ones. Yeah, I have a problem with my other eye, but it's not the same, something inside. It's all right.
All right, folks, let's, let's try to go through the story back.
We appreciate the opportunity to talk about it.
I haven't checked to see whether we spoke good morning or it's gotten to good afternoon, but I think we're still on good morning mode. Good morning, board members. Thank you for bearing with a long morning of numbers. We're going to deviate from numbers for a little bit and talk about one of the things that's coming up in this era of uncertainty. The certainty is you will be asked questions by your constituents, you'll be asked questions by media, you'll be asked questions by other local elected officials about our budget. And as you can see, we have a lot of unknowns about the numbers. So what I want to try to do for the next 45 minutes or so is to talk about what we do know and what we want to say as a board. That doesn't mean it precludes what any individual board member wants to say in your own point of view, but what do we as a board want to say when you get those questions? So keeping in mind the call from the paper, what can you tell us about the board, about the budget? What can you tell us about your priorities? We want to try and come up with what the business world does and what many nonprofits do, which is to come up with a elevator speech. Sixty seconds, so clearly in 60 seconds, and this is a standard format, actually it's usually 30 seconds. Like at the TV commercials, 30 seconds. I'll give you 60, because just by the time you finish saying Buckland County schools, you've already used 10. So we have to come up with, what we're going to do, I have Adrian Amberman here from Children First Communities and Schools. I work with Adrian sometimes on her marketing committee. I say sometimes, she's always doing it and I can sometimes make it to her meetings and sometimes not. But she does a really good job of helping you kind of get down to the nitty gritty for your elevator speech and what you can say when you impact or are interacting with people that you're standing next to in the grocery store or at an event. So that's what we're going to do today. In preparation for that, I'm also going to give you some things. We don't have a lot of time left, but I'm going to give you some resources that you as board members can use when you have more than 60 seconds. And that has to do with some of the speaking points from what you've seen today. And those speaking points, again, without getting into numbers, just the overall concept. Have a couple of themes. I think the biggest thing for me personally that I saw today and from our discussions is uncertainty. We don't know where we stand with any of this. We don't know how the legislation is going to choose. So for me, a big deal is uncertainty. And I think that may want to be part of what you include in your elevator speech. We just don't know at this point where it's going to stand. But you're going to, you are going to be the ones that decide what your elevator speech is going to be. While we have things like uncertainty, you've heard Dr. Baldwin use, we don't have a crystal ball, we've used the phrase "normal". There are a number of terms that we use to describe the situation that we're in. Keep it in mind that we, unlike municipalities, unlike local governments or state governments, we don't have, we are not a taxing authority. We have no control over, generally speaking, our revenue unless, maybe you have some influence with the people who get it to us. So that's the second part of what we're going to talk about is what influence might you have as a board with some of the folks who double out the dough? I mean, that needs to be part of our conversation, especially in light of, as Chip referenced, we've got a low ranking in our state, now 115 LEAs, we are eight fifth now. And by the way, that dropped from 72nd in the year 2007/08. So we've gone from 72nd in the state over the past few years to eight fifth. I'd be asking why, you know, what's happened there? That our revenue that comes from others, why has it dropped? And is there anything we can do about it? So as we think about some of those things, we're going to come up with what our elevator speech needs to be. When I say our, it's yours. I'm going to invite seven of our friends from the audience to be volunteers, some of our staff, to join in this project with you. And then when Adrian's done kind of helping you craft what your 60-second elevator speech is, we'll talk about some of the ways that you may be able to use that speech with Anna Austin, who's here from NCAE. So Adrian, without further ado, I've, I've this, this word document up. I'm going to hand this out to you all, but Adrian has a presentation I want to blow up.
Thank you, thanks so much for having me. So I'm Adrian with Children First Communities and Schools and the Director of Engagements. I do fundraising communications for the organization. And I actually just relocated a year, a year ago from Washington DC where I was Director of Communications for a children's health organization. And a big part of the reason why I moved to Buckland County is because of the school system. So thank you for, for all of your support and making it such a great system. So I want to start with, who here knows what an elevator speech is? And Rachel, have you used one before? Great, that's good. Do you, have you ever used one related to your work on the, on the school board? Okay, so this is going to be fun. So an elevator speech, for anyone who doesn't know, the idea is you're stuck in an elevator with someone, or not stuck, because I made you an hour. But you're in an elevator, you've got 30 seconds to tell them what, what you do, why you do it, and to get them engaged somehow. And I know I've been in this situation. I, I, every place I've worked for, I've thought, oh, I, you know, I know what my organization does, I know why I'm doing this work. But then lots of times you're in that, that, on the, on the spot and you start stumbling over your words and before you know it, the door to the elevator is open and the person's walking out and you haven't even given them your business card. So the purpose of this exercise today is to get down to one of our thoughts and then practice it. Because really, it seems kind of silly, but the more you practice it, the more it will just come automatically when you're in that situation where you have the potential to bring someone on board and to help educate them about why you're doing what you're doing. So, can you do the rest? So a couple of things about what an elevator speech is. It's brief, 30 to 60 seconds, it's very clear. So I know you all do this work, you're meshing this work and all I know, even things like VCS, don't assume that someone knows what VCS stands for. And then also be passionate. So you all are doing this work because you care about the children and you care about our school system. And so that's, that's something that I really want to stress, it's so important. Don't be afraid to let your passion for what you're doing come across when you're talking to someone. Because that's what's really going to grab them and keep their, their attention. So it isn't an elevator speech. It's not a mission statement. That would make it easier, but that's not what it is. Although it's good to know what your mission statement is. It's not a history lesson. Also good for you to know the history of why you're doing what you're doing, but people don't need to know all that. It's also not a monologue. The point is, people, this is real time, real life, people are going to be interacting. And that's another reason why it's good to know your elevator pitch. Because then you can kind of work with that, that back and forth and you can stay focused on what the message is and what, what your, what your ask is. And then finally, it's not a script. So again, this is something where it's good to know and it's good to be on the same page, but it needs to be a little flexible and, and we're not robots. So we don't want to come across that way in how we communicate with people. So what are the components of a really good elevator speech? It starts with a strong opening. And that can be a headline, it can be a factoid, you know, did you know? And it could be statistics, but Children First Communities and Schools statistic that we start with a lot when we're talking to people is, did you know that one in four kids in Buckland County is living in poverty? That's right there, a lot of people are surprised by that. It pulls them in and it helps lay the groundwork for the next part, which is the need for the problem. And these are two different things. The need is a gap that's existing that you're, that you're going to try to fill. And the problem is something that's broken and we need to fix it. And then there's the unique response. So what is it that you're doing to help fill the gap or fix the problem? And finally, you need to engage the person. So you're not just leaving the conversation where they're kind of like, oh, it's, you know, they're sticking it into what they're doing, that's great. You want to either get them engaged in volunteering, you want them supporting whatever policy it is you're, you're supporting, you want them telling other people about the great work that you're doing. So that's a really key part, that you never leave them wondering what the city wants from them. So just really quickly, can we throw a couple of, how would, some facts or some statistics that came out of this conversation from this morning? Can, can you throw out a couple that you think would be, be good ones to lead with?
I believe with over half of our students are on free and reduced lunch.
I would lead that North Carolina ranks 45th in the nation for student spending and the Buckland County ranks 85th in the state.
Yeah, that's a great one.
And there are five states in North Carolina that are not increasing funding to public school and North Carolina is one of those five.
Five in the nation.
I'm sorry.
Those are really great ones.
Well, I just got corrected by this. Sorry!
Great, I don't mean yay.
That is okay.
And then some, just to skip to number four, engaging them. For, for the purpose of this and the school and the budget, what are some ways that you think you'd be engaging the different people that you're talking to? Well, let's step back for one second. Who do you think you might be talking to? Parents? Who else?
Parents.
County commissioners, county commissioners. Staff, right? Teachers and staff. So what are some of the different ways that you might engage some of the different audiences?
I would talk about, especially if I was talking about, talking to parents, I would talk about the need to really get involved with your schools and, and offer whatever type of volunteer services you can to, to make up for the gaps that we're seeing.
I think it's important to, people don't have that clue. And I think it's part of what we have to do is just spread the word, quote the circumstances. Most people have no idea of these facts that we're sharing. And I think just, just by spreading it is important.
So would you ask them to, would you be asking them, this is a website, or come to one of our?
Tell others.
Tell others. Okay, so what we're going to do now, this is where we get really in bond, is I'm going to ask everyone to pair up in groups of two. And we're going to pair a board member with a staff, a staff member. And I have a few different scenarios and I'm going to repeat them out. And they should be, every, every pair is going to be a scenario. And I'd like the two of you to work together, you can take a couple of minutes to work individually and kind of think through how you wish to sound. And then I want you to, I want to get to the level of the, I didn't bring any props, sorry. I didn't bring my Superman case or my tiara, but. Maybe next time. So some of the different scenarios, so one of the scenarios, you're running into the parent of a rising third grader at the grocery store and they're very interested in how to teach us to do cuts. Another scenario is you're attending a sporting event and you're sitting next to a high school teacher whose class is going to be getting larger and larger. Another scenario is you're having dinner with a rotarian friend who participates in international exchange programs. Another one is you're attending a PTO meeting with the parents of rising seventh graders and they're interested in robotics on the pool. Then you're, another one is you're mingling during a Chamber of Commerce networking event for the business communities. And then finally, another situation is that you bump into a county commissioner at a community event. So we're going to take five minutes to do this work in pairs. And then I'm going to ask for volunteers to do some role plays in front of a whole group so we can kind of see what we think works, gets to be supportive, but gives constructive feedback and maybe together kind of try to get some best practices for how to be taught about this.
So, what should we do? I've, I've asked for certain, those of you I've spoken to, there should be seven of you in the audience, you just select your board of the sign.
Miss, I'm not even flashback to be a chosen candidate. Are you a serious?
You can use this as a direct on.
No, I was kidding, I was going to talk about.
Oh, no, we don't.
So you're refusing us to have a thing here? And then you're thinking about how do you, what is, you start thinking about what do you want to get the admissions for? Want to get.
Well, this gets, this is where it gets difficult. If I have a long, a long thing versus. Well, I know, and that's, that's what we're doing.
I'm just reading the information. I'm trying to count it down. Very long.
This is about all that, I think. Most certainly, it's all about, I think. I think it's.
I feel like I do this time. Thank you guys.
Yeah. Do it all the time?
I'll try.
That's fun. Our goal would be to have. Know what works. Five more minutes?
Very loud. I think it's like. We're just talking. We're not always. I think it's all pretty useful. I think it's. 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 And I'm here.
One more minute, everybody.
I'm more I see you. Cause I see you. You're going to say something. I think. And then I would.
Yeah.
You can get. Yeah. I could say that.
I'm a mom. I'm a mom. We are the same. So if we can just wrap up and. So if we just want to, we don't need to go back to the table right now. I think we'll do some role plays right here. Make it two volunteers to go first. Do your little role play.
Are we all gonna go?
We'll see.
I'll wait till.
Should I take, should I go, right? We got one. We're gonna go. Okay, if you just tell everyone who you are, just in front of them, it's a double.
I'm Bob Reinhardt, I'm extremely stressed out over this, so.
He really is.
She was, earlier this week, she could be in a stressful situation with her. So she's like, hang on, she faked it.
Was that, was that the elevator coming? Somebody wrote, put my positions up.
So our situation is we're in an elevator and a chamber conference. So I hope there's. So, hey, you're with Buckland County Schools.
Hey, how are you? I'm Bob Reinhardt. All right, so we're preparing our students for jobs that are available today and some of them don't even exist today.
No, how are you all doing that? That's great.
We're offering programs such as Microsoft certification so that they can have these skills to go into workforce.
Great, we're having a huge skills gap though. How could you be helping with those?
Maybe we could partner together and you could kind of work with us on one of our committees and let us know what those skills gaps are so that we can better prepare them going forward.
Great, I would love to. How would I contact the company?
You can contact me or you can contact the central office. If you'd love to have your.
My name is.
That's right.
Thank you so much. Good to meet you. All right, so just to get some, any feedback on the elevator?
I'd do much better when I don't have any kind of script that I can stick to.
I wrote not a script.
I know it's not, and that's part of it.
He was a little stressed.
Yeah.
Well, he probably does much better when Christie Chig's not putting.
I was gonna say, I think she does more of magic obsession than I hope because phrase mine. It's better. It's sixty seconds.
So you think they did a good job?
Yes.
Other, so something else, what other thing specific that you liked about what they did?
I don't think you don't pay body now, people.
Fast.
It was very, I don't think I could have split off with the top. It's very relevant to the, to the, to the situation. And I wouldn't have been able to look that up and have gotten it out.
Right. I feel like it's a good example too of how this is, he, Bob didn't have the opportunity to say what the problem was, but he didn't need to because it was brought into the conversation. And so because you had the thinking though about what the problems you're addressing, you were prepared to kind of frame it around that. So that's really good.
I mean, because we do, we're, you know, employers, they're looking for certain folks that aren't available, not only from Buckland County, but from our country, so.
And then the next step, I think, so how is what you're focusing on around the budget supporting that really important work you're doing about preparing kids for future employment? Thinking that question. Okay. Norm and I are going. We're in a hell of a.
Stuck on the thirty fourth floor.
And so what do you do?
Look, we have, we need, my, my commission.
We're talking just the issue about what order. Just what we do.
Yeah. Okay, so, listen, we didn't write a script, by the way. We're doing this.
It's all right, Norm, let's go.
Bottom.
I'm, I'm really appreciative of what County Commissioners are doing for our schools. Did you know we have over fifty percent of our students are pretty rich? And that, that, that program, you have food bank, you know, to help bring food to our families that are in need.
I'm not on the commission, I'm on the school board, but I agree. Just want you to know, I agree with you. I think it's a tragedy that we have so many students that are living in poverty. And I, and I agree that the, the Man of Food Bank program has, I've been in the classroom when those backpacks that they distribute on Friday are distributed and it's a very emotional situation to observe when those students are so hungry run to get the backpack and the foods available. Have you had that experience?
Oh, yes, I have. In fact, it's been a remarkable experience. Several years ago, we began, like, we had a school, I did, have, started there on that food bank program. We were so concerned the kids would be embarrassed and concerned about that. How would you give food to them? Would they, would they feel like people were single or something like, and that's not what's happening at all. Kids really appreciate it. Over the years, the amount of food has changed and we're calling it, we call it some sort of, some sort of committee to help lead this powerful system of backpacks. Get one can of this food.
Do you think our commissioners are aware of this?
I think they are not necessarily aware of the need to increase the amount of food that they're giving, a little less than they need to give. Give some fresh foods and vegetables in there. I just can't do it. But still, they want to take this one time, it makes a difference. For a great.
So, so you think that people will need to contact the commission and ask them to form an interest committee or some way to pull agencies together that might enhance that?
Absolutely. Absolutely, I do, soon, but.
That answer was too short. Thank you very much. Okay, feedback?
They were stuck on the elevator.
They're ready to talk to a party.
An elevator speech four.
They were in passion though.
They were really.
Really told the story. And I think that's, that's something that was really strong about it. When you're, when you're talking about the, the strong opening, one of those openings can be a story. Or you could make the story around the need of a problem. So I think lost times a personal story, it wants us kind of short and to the point.
I heard that.
Well, I'm telling you, that's the toughest part of this whole thing, is keeping it short.
Right.
I mean, and it, it is hard, especially because we all like, oh, well, we should.
But people appreciate this kind of thing. It's, you're respecting people's time and, you know, I was at a meeting yesterday. A big part of what I do is fundraising, I had a meeting at a bank. And I always appreciate those meetings with the bank people because those meetings are getting out of there in ten minutes. It's very much, okay, so what are you doing?
They don't have any.
Who are you? And, okay, what, so what can we do for you? Like, what is it that you want? And, but most situations aren't like that, but they still kind of want you to get to the point. Great, thank you. The next, next volunteer.
We're sitting in the back.
I'm Sue Metz, I'm the first to vote. That was a, that was a heck of a play.
Oh, that was great.
Good, good pleasure of sitting there. I thought it was a good chance to mention something, you know, I'm teaching over rentals and I'm just wondering what's happening, what are those discussions out there right now? You know that the, our fund is going to cut in the state for the last couple of years with class size just continuing to grow. And it's just something that under my school.
And I am so frustrated by the funding at state level. And, and I don't know if you know this, but I'm going to, I'm ranked forty fifth in the nation for students. And Buckland County is a hundred and fifteen. I'm sorry, it's eighty fifth, I don't agree with this. I mean, it's a huge problem. And I, I know that classroom is not an issue.
And the thing I can hear is as far as we were saying about that, as far as it continues or doesn't create, doesn't drop down. The thing that has to be learned and created right now is a more research base and do different, different question of these teachers have to make. We've got, we've got to make it work for the more accelerated learner, for the more challenged. And that can get us up to the models, have a different model, that's another time. I would say it's from our margins, the things we do is certainly have to be a part of the CIE and we have a smaller organization.
I would very much encourage, we all have very, very courage, I was a very good player. And I just appreciate it. First shot.
Okay, so feedback. What did, what something you did that you did well? Statistics, statistics, right?
Well, one thing I think is very important, no matter what we think of the situation, we try to keep it as positive as we can. I mean, especially at this point, we really don't know what's going to happen. I mean, there may be some radical changes, they can be radically good, you know? So I think it's important at this point that we stay positive with everyone and hope for the best. You know, and it's really all we can do at the end of the day is what we can do with what we have. And I think as we as board members, we project that, that positive, it helps not only, you know, our teacher, the parents, that sort of thing. So I think it's very important that you do everything you do, you're really actively positive.
Right. And I think, I think something that you did that was really good is, I liked how you, you were honestly, you're frustrated, you know, you're connecting, you're empathizing with a person who's clearly also feeling frustrated. But then the, the elevator speeches allows you to frame it. And that's part of the reason why I circled number two and number three is because you're taking that, that, that problem and that point of frustration and you're reframing it to show, well, this is how we are working together to address this problem. I think that's great.
You know, my, my daughter just loves science and she's really enjoyed being on this robotics team. But I'm just afraid that when she graduates from high school, she's not going to find a good paying high tech job in this community. And, you know, I'm going to go take it to my grandchildren and I'll go meet with someone in a place to.
I totally hear you. I'm Amy, I'm the newest school board member. And did you know that we work, let me tell you how we can develop our students for the top ten professional jobs in the first century. Where have we, local employers are, local employers say that they have to work elsewhere and we want to hire our graduates. And so what we're doing is we're launching a science, technology, engineering and math academy to train our students for these high tech jobs in the future. And we need parents like you to appeal to lawmakers and policymakers to help provide the money through the budget process. So, you know, I'm so excited that you, you want to stay here in Asheville and want your children to stay here in Asheville. So, you know, what, can you help us? What can you do? Who can you contact just to help get this call rolling?
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, Tim Offner, my best friend. I'm just going to call him right now. We've got to come back to him as well.
That'd be great. And, you know, we're gonna have, we're gonna have more meetings and, you know, I encourage you to bring more parents in. I know that, you know, your friends are probably very similar to Al on the same thing. I, I know that, you know, your friends are probably very similar, all on the same thing.
Feedback?
You know, we all want what's best for Buck County high school students, and now it's, but she got it. I mean, we want what's best for them, so...
And I like how they, you know, put it back to her in, in a way that, hey, you can help us, what more, what can you do to help us? You know, we need you, and so I, I like that.
The ask.
Yeah.
People need, people, lots of people want to get things, but they don't know how, they don't know the best place to fit in, and that's part of your role as, as board members, is to help them to figure that out, I think that's, that's, that's all. You can just get on more, there's, there's a change.
You're in the elevator, we're talking.
I don't like Mr. Dance. I make the ball, I'm a long-term board education.
I used to do that.
I'm so glad I made mention of you, because I wanted to ask you, if you did, that if you don't have a comprehensive arts program in the model, or in the middle high schools, there's strong evidence that shows arts plays a significant role in improving student learning. Do you think arts is an important part of our program?
I, yeah, I do, I, you know, I really do.
As a county commissioner, um, Buck County County has such a thriving arts community. Do you see any way that they can help us with this problem?
I would hope so, but we need to, we need to get that word out, I think, I mean, to let them know that we don't have, uh, all the arts that we, we, we need.
And I think if you're talking about after date, um, you, you as a commissioner, uh, you can appreciate the fact that Buck County's since tried to hold the programs we have, it's just not enough. Um, do you think the commission can help us, uh, find ways to fund and expand our art programs?
Well, he's pretty tight, I don't, you know, money's always pretty tight, I, I don't, I don't know how we could, we could come up with that, but maybe if we were together in involving the art community, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we could probably do that. Maybe, maybe just, just to bring the awareness.
I guess to bring it to awareness and possibly put together people, we will contact, uh, discharge programs, or make people have those contacts with those people as well, legislators.
Could I, yes, would, would, send me an email. Gotta go some work, right?
What did you like about that?
She did a great job connecting her to the community, and with him being a county commissioner, it was great, it was connection to the community.
It was clear that you knew your audience, and I think that's a good thing too, about the, anytime you're talking to someone, it's, it's good to know who you're talking to, and to try to think about what is their, what's my agreement, and what are their values, and what are the barriers that they have? So value is, you need to be, barrier is money. But how can you get that foot in the door to continue the conversation? Other comments? I think it's interesting, you, one thing you did is you sort of asked him, what, what can you do? I think there's some situations that I could really work, it's sort of a risk, uh, putting someone on the spot, and that's another thing, just sort of assessing the situation. In the, in the thirty seconds, thirty to sixty seconds that you have, are you going to, do you, do you really know what you need? Are you gonna go ahead and ask them for it? Or is the, the ask, the better ask to say, you know, can I, can we set up a meeting next week? And I'll bring the information? So that's just something, again, where it's good to know ahead of time, what is the ask for you to be, and what's, kind of, be strategic about how to ask for it.
Like, for me, I'm thinking, you know, she has several opportunities to, for the county commissioner, whether, like, in our situation, I may not see that parent again, so I can go get to the point, so that when they walk out of that elevator, they know exactly what they need to do, exactly.
Brian. I'm thinking you're out of this.
We're at dinner. Just back to the international exchange program.
I have to say, I'm so excited, I just came back from, um, from France with this exchange program, uh, and I just, I, I just am really concerned, because I don't, I don't think we've got very much, you know, part of my, I really don't know, how many things went on in the elementary schools here, and I, I see here, it's really hard to get these teachers, and, you know, I just, I just know the value of this, this international travel. I've done, I really want to see our school system getting more to the plate with some of these, uh, you know, opportunities cultural, different, you know, these are outside of Buck County, most of them are.
I'd like to hear more about your trip, and maybe if you had family with you, if you had kids, that type of thing. One thing we do have is we started, uh, in our first year, finishing up, maybe in our second year, obviously, I would wing it better than that, but, uh, Spanish immersion program that aren't administered. As a system, we understand the global implications and the global connections that the world is today. I don't know if you knew this or not, but we're, we're educating students today for, for careers that we don't even know what they're gonna be ten, fifteen years from now. We'd like to do more, uh, of those types of things, uh, as we continue to progress, and one of the difficulties we have with this type of this, our state is going through some changes, and right now, we don't know what our budget's gonna be, and, and processes that we've used for probably twenty years may change. So we've got some uncertainty there, but, uh, that's an issue that, uh, we're hopeful, we come, uh, as it works out, it'll be good for Buck County, for students of Buck County schools.
I really think it needs, there's a lot of things we can learn from other countries and states as well, to do it correctly. And it's a big focus of Rotary, so I, I really appreciate it, and there's some opportunities we have.
Would you, would you yourself, like, if you come to the office, and you help on a work, work level, Buck County school? Let me give you my card. Free calls, you can email whatever, and, and if, if I can't put you in the right place, I'll ask a question to put you, did you connect with the right people? Maybe you'd be involved in some of those areas, and, thanks.
Wait, wait.
Feedback?
I was impressed he had a card.
I got it.
I have to go to my car again. In addition to giving your card, the only thing I would suggest is don't let her walk out without you having me.
Well, we haven't deserted yet.
Yeah.
We're waiting for something.
I think something that you did that was great was you, um, you made that transition to talking about the, the budget. Um, and I know just from the, from the perspective of fundraising, for example, to bring it back there, it, when you're starting out as a fundraiser, it feels really awkward asking for money, but the more you do it, the more it feels like, you know, this is something I believe in. And I would like you to, I'm ready to help you understand why you should believe in it too. And so you're not asking anyone to do you a favor, you're asking them to join us in, in supporting what we know is best for, for, for our children in Buck County. So, that, that can be, uh, kind of, sometimes it feels a little awkward or difficult to make that transition, but, um, I think you did a really good job with that. Didn't feel awkward.
I was, I was worried before.
That's me, is me, yeah.
I'm in. Oh, and oh, I have to dance, okay.
Are you talking, are you sure?
Yeah, oh.
I'll summon the, summon the.
Good fun.
Amy, Amy, sorry.
She likes on you.
Are we over standing? Are we in the elevator?
No, we're actually, we actually just said a P D O, we, we were.
Standing room only.
Standing room only, you know, so, so, and your child is in the bodies. Okay, so that's what you're...
Um, you know, I am so excited, I'm, I'm sure, I'd be delighted to start first, and he, he just wants to really, um, you know, every waking minute, that's what he wants to do, he's like this, like this, like this, and, you know, I'm so excited, I just, I really hope that, you know, he can get paid for that one day.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm very excited, we're doing several meetings. Uh, and our middle school though, we, even, we have a component of robotics there, and actually, one of our schools just wants a competition, uh, in robotics, and somebody help me with that.
That's awesome, like, that's seriously good, my, my son is in the third grade right now, but, you know, soon he'll be at that one.
Right, and, and we're gonna open a new STEM high school in two thousand and fourteen, which will, you know, segue, you know, from middle school all the way up to high school, and, you know, address some of those issues.
Adam, can you tell me what the part of STEM?
Well, science, technology, engineering, and math, you know? But the problem is, and I'll, you know, we'll cure this, we don't know more than one K for a school board member. You know, our part of the higher, I'm thinking it's not what it should be.